All right. Well, we have a full complement. Yay. All right. So with that said, it's 5:31 and I would like to call the liaison meeting between the Groton Board of Ed, the City Council, the Town Council, the RTM to order. The first order of business is to kind of review of the September 2nd meeting minutes and I guess we should vote on them. So I would take a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes of September 2nd.
So move?
I got Lee. I'm sorry. That'd be Rosemary. Is there any discussion about the minutes?
There is a a change that needs to be made under the Town Council report that the mayor told me about previously. Under the Town Council report, the GoPro cameras for teachers, they would like to have them or like to use them. It's not that they do have them.
All right. Can that correction be made?
Let me just get a clarification. Is anyone taking notes? Minutes?
We're actually recording too.
Well, it's always, I'm Kathy, you look so studious there. I thought you were doing it, but I'll do it.
Well, I am.
Oh, you are? Okay. And can you email them to me and we'll get them disseminated?
I sure will.
Great. Okay, good. Thanks.
Kathy, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would much rather skydive than take take minutes.
Well, sometimes it's really difficult because people talk really quickly, so it's a little hard. So I don't I don't expect them always to be accurate, so, but I do the best I can.
I appreciate that Kathy. Any other further discussion? Hearing on all those in favors of accepting the September 2nd meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, and must have carried. Dr. Grenier, can you come talk about?
Sure.
Because last we met, we have had a full month of school.
Well, let me, let me, let me start with the problems first. On Sunday afternoon, basically our luck ran out. We had been, we'd been having a I think there were six prior COVID cases that had been identified. And in each case, the individual had not been in school for four, five, in some cases, eight days. So the contact tracing was extremely limited. But Sunday afternoon, I learned that there was an individual at the middle school who in fact had been in the building while the individual was infectious. And we, we had to do a very extensive about approximately 100 people were were potential contacts. And ultimately, the school was able to identify about, not about, we identified 41 contacts. So what I mean by a contact, of course, is someone who was within six feet for more than 15 minutes. And the way the system works is last Sunday, Ledzlight called me and said that they, they received the positive test. Sometimes the individual self reports and sometimes the Ledzlight will hear the result. But anyway, when they reported it to me, they then tried to speak to the individual, what the health districts do, to try to determine who was in contact with this person, the six, six feet for more than 15 minutes. And then they turn it over to us because they, they don't have the ability to, to call everyone. So what we did was we we knew some of the obvious individuals and then we asked everybody to come in, pretty much everybody to come in the next day because we had to run the scenario of where this individual was during the time that he or she was infectious. And then, once we figured that out, we sent those individuals to get tested. So we're in a holding pattern on 41 people that need to get tested. The next, the next day, we, or maybe the later that night, we've had quite a few lately, another, another individual at Claude Chester tested, tested positive. But in that case, we knew it was quite limited. And then yesterday, there was a Northeast Academy individual. But we know that that individual was not in school. So I can, I can tell you, what I mean by that is from the, from the moment the test is taken, not when you get the results, but when the test is taken, the Ledzlight officials ask us to go back 48 hours prior. The presumed infectious period is 48 hours before a positive test or 48 hours before onset of symptoms. So if somebody had an onset of symptoms or got, or got tested on Monday, for example, and they were, they were, of course, they wouldn't have been in school on Sunday and Saturday. Even if they were in school on Friday, the school would not be the place where you would do contact tracing. There might be contacts in the community, but we wouldn't be, be doing the contact tracing there. So in some cases, as I said, we get lucky and the individual has not been in school for that 48 hours. In some cases, the individual is. So I would say right now we are in a, we're, we're approaching a real practical problem. The middle school, middle school has, I believe it's 12, 12 staff members who will be out for the next two weeks. We've been, we've been pretty lucky, but at a certain point, as I think as I explained to Kim, we're just not going to be able to open the school. They're just, we won't have enough teachers. We won't have enough staff. We won't have, you know, whatever. So, but in the meantime, we are continuing with our hybrid learning model, meaning that the children who, in the first part of the alphabet, about about a third of the kids approximately, a little bit more than a third are coming in on Monday and Tuesdays. Another approximately a little bit more than a third are coming in on Thursdays and Fridays. And then we have, on average, about 27% of our children are full distance learning. And so we are, we are in the process, I know teachers are working like crazy and I suspect Representative Flax knows this because he lives with somebody who was working like crazy. So the teachers here, the, the real problem is, and I suspect the mayor knows this as well, you teach all day to both the kids in front of you and the kids at home. And then you finish your day's teaching and you've got hours and hours of work to correct the work that had been done during the day by, by the remote students, which is a majority of the students. So right now, I think our technology is, is, is good. I would say the, the hybrid learning is, is, is a work in progress. We're doing a lot more team teaching. That is to say, for example, only at the elementary school, but somebody is doing of a, of a three-person team, say, someone's doing math, someone's doing reading and someone's doing writing. So they're, they're working, they're working their way through that. But we, as we, we continue, so we've had one, two, three, well, we, we've had three cases in the last two days. So, you know, we're, I think we're all poised to try to respond to this as best we can. We, we are on, in daily contact with Ledzlight Health District. So right now, I, I, I think we're, we're holding steady. But I think everyone is, is, is beginning to sense that if there's, if there's much more widespread infections. I was, I was on the phone last night, I was told by Ledzlight that one of our, one of our students plays youth football. Not Groton youth football, but another, another youth football. So they asked me and I, I was lucky and I was able to contact the coach and, and the whole team had to be put on quarantine. So it's, it's, it's spreading in our community. There's, there's no question.
Can I just add something, Mike? One of the things we've done on our website, on the front page, is to really put all aspects of what's happening this fall. So whether it's the hybrid plan, how we're taking attendance, the health issues. And there's actually a banner that goes across that indicates, and this really came from the board request and other requests that we kind of keep track of those cases. So you can actually see that and, you know, we've notified parents about this and you know, we're just trying to communicate as best we can. It, it happens so fast and we have to pay attention to this contact tracing. That's a really important ingredient. But I think communication is also a huge ingredient to all of this and, and, you know, letting families know and schools know when these things are happening.
Yeah, I just had two things to add. We are coming down the home stretch. The middle school is 99.9% finished. The gym will be finished the end of next week. I, I, I had a tour with a engineering expert on Sunday of the, of the new fields. And the person, family member of mine was enormously impressed. He's only six years old, but he knows a lot about construction and he thought the fields were fabulous and they are. The second thing is, on Tuesday, we, unfortunately, we can't have very many people because of social distancing. But we're doing another topping off ceremony. They're putting the final beam on the Cutler Elementary site school. And so that, that work is continuing without interruption. But Cutler is, is, the infrastructure is, will be finished on Tuesday and the and West Side, I think we, we're, we're about a week away from finishing the infrastructure of that building as well. So, so things are, things are moving.
So with that, so how the
I think you're muted, Kim.
I'm not. I think, I think I'm okay.
We can hear you.
That's too bad. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Caitlin had the right idea, I think. Um, so I, so in support of that, we have a naming committee for the two elementary schools that are, are coming. The board is really going to have to be finalizing on the magnet themes for the district because we will, at that point, have all of elementary schools be on a magnet theme. We are, along with that, we are in using Mike Zuba's company. I can never remember.
Alone in Bit Room.
Thank you. Um, and they're helping us with the distribution in terms of what is, what is a population of our schools and who, what neighborhoods go. We're not looking at redistricting. It's not redistricting, but we're making sure that we have the right amount of kids going to our schools specifically for the two new ones. The one that's on the Cutler site has, has requirements in terms of our diversity and, and et cetera, because of the type of grant that we, that we receive for that. Um, we, the board is also busy looking at applications for our next superintendent. And in fact, we're meeting, we met on Monday with our search person, Mary Broderick, and we will be meeting again next week on Wednesday with the hope the following week to start interviewing candidates. So that's where we are on that search. We have so much. I think, I think that though, that is big. I think, I think all of us are kind of holding our breath about what when, about the COVID cases in terms of what's happening, specifically when we see of our neighboring towns. We have East Lime, that's the high school, the middle school, Waterford Middle School are all closed for two to three weeks. Norwich Public School has, has has, has gone all virtual. And so I just think that, I think that the board is kind of holding our breaths around that. So any, any questions for Mike in terms of what's going on with the Board of Ed stuff? Kathy?
I just want to clarify that the middle school and Claude Chester are the only schools closed. The remainder are
Correct. Well, Claude Chester is not closed anymore. It's just for two days.
Oh, it's not closed?
It's open. It's open tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes.
Much more impact on Groton Middle School than Claude.
Okay.
It had to close for a short time.
Bruce?
Thanks, Kim. Two questions. One is, Dr. Grenier, did I hear you say that you don't think the middle school is gonna open? Or?
No, no, no. It, 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 it's just closed for two weeks.
Okay.
Then it will be open. Yeah. It will open on the 19th.
Okay. And the other, I just have a comment of an active parent who has a kid in the new middle school. That I want to, I want to preface it by saying that I, you know, obviously the, the task at hand with the new middle school and with the COVID is overwhelming and it's a huge task and there's a lot of different areas that have to be addressed. It seems to us after the first month or so, that there are still a lot of, like, I think the teachers are struggling in some cases. The students are struggling. There's, there's substitute teachers, which I totally understand, but some of the, like, we're not, we're not aware that they're substitute teachers. And so the, when you're trying to talk to them or have a level of discussion about, you know, issues that the, you know, the identification that they're, they may be substitute is a big deal because they're, you know, they're not, you know, they're second line, whatever you want to call.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know, you know, and again, I understand why the school had to close. The pressure it puts on the parents and the students, I don't know, I don't know what the answers are and I don't envy, you know, the Board of Ed and being in that position. But like, I just feel like, and I guess you guys know it, that the work just is never done because there's so many unanswered things. And, and I know some are more important than others. One of the things that we've noticed, and it's, and it really is a big deal, is that the students are submitting their work and they're not getting any response from their teachers. So you have, you know, a sixth grader who submitted, you know, you know, their, their work for, that their homework that they're getting and they're submitting and there's not a, there's not a dialogue. There's no response from the teachers that, and you know, it kind of completes that try, you know, the, the the circle or the triangle from, you know, from student to teacher. So I just, I, I, I guess I just, I know you guys, I know you know it's there, but it just, it's, it's very evident from the, from the parenting side of things and, and the students too. So I don't know where there's easy fixes and things that need to take more time, but that's what we're seeing.
Yeah. We, we, that was a, I don't know if you saw me on the phone. That was a commissioner. And he just asked me how the hybrid model is going. And I said, oh, God. We, yeah, we're, we're doing everything we possibly can. You know, like I said about that team teaching, we're, we're trying to, in the big picture, Bruce, I'm convinced every ounce of energy we put into the program now is going to pay dividends when and if we have to go full remote. And frankly, it would be easier to go full remote, but, but we are thinking, I know at the elementary, we're thinking about maybe, you know, if you could picture a three-person team, one, one person might take care of the remote kids entirely. And the, and the two, and the, and the two other teachers would take care of the class. We, we put all the kids into, all the in-person kids into two classes. So we're, we're fiddling with those models right now and we're working hard with the, with the union and with the, with the administrators. It, it is, it is, like I said, it's, it's a daunting task and we have to lighten the load and Kim has been super supportive because every, every week we talked about, so what do we do for the teachers? We're, we're trying to, we bought a piece of software that's going to make attendance a little bit easier to take. We're, we're, we're trying to, trying to do whatever we can, but we're, we're, we're open to suggestions.
Yeah, because Bruce, I, I feel really like, you know, being in sixth grade, being in a new school, having new teachers and not having any response back. And of course, that's not gold standard and of, and of course, that's not what our teachers do. Um, but they, I think that we are just trying to sort of figure this out. I've been, you know, my new mantra is that hybrid model is not the gold standard of education. But, and my concern is also that we have teachers who are working in less than capable conditions and also working way into the night just to kind of, kind of do, kind of do their job. And we're going to lose them as well, not lose them, but it's hard to keep that stamina up. And so we are
And the practical matter of opening the school has been enormously challenging. Forget about the pandemic. It's, it's been, it's been tough. You know, the, the fields weren't, and then there was a problem with the gym floor, so we couldn't use the gym and then some of the theater wasn't quite ready. So we've been, we've been juggling things around. The middle school folks have been juggling things around. So on, on top of the pandemic, we have that. And so I certainly, I certainly understand what you're saying.
I want you to know, there's a, there's a thank you in there too. I mean, I'm not, you know, I, I understand that. You know, like you said, I, my wife's a school teacher and I see it every day how daunting the task is. So.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. And, and, and we appreciate how difficult this is for the, the kids and the teachers and
I mean, for kids to change their gear on Sunday night to say, no, if you're a Groton middle school student, you're not going, you're not going to school. I mean, that's really hard and that's hard to work on, on, on schedules and working and all, and, and actually just life. I know that Mary Grantowski has a question.
I just, thank you Chairman Watson. Thank you for having me here this evening. I, I needed to let you all know, I reported out last night at the council meeting that I was contacted over the weekend by a Groton middle school teacher who expressed concerns to me. And I have, I've talked to, I communicated with Chairman Watson about this in advance before I spoke last night. And the concerns, there were health issues for the kids and for the staff. And Dr. Grenier touched upon it. Called it would be to do contact tracing at the middle school level and at the high school level. It's a little bit easier. And as you guys have found at the elementary level, because the cohorts are so much smaller and more isolated. But when you get to the middle school and high school level, it's so hard to keep people in a set area just by virtue of how the curriculum is structured. So there was concern about, about that issue with the health. There was concern with some of what the chair has said about the hybrid model and it is very difficult for teachers. And I think the teacher reached to me because they, they knew that I'm living it as well. It is very difficult to do and you almost feel like you're shortchanging both sets of kids. Now, I, you know, the kids sitting in front of you and the kids sitting at home. And who gets your attention? And how do you divide your attention? And, you know, for a teacher who wants to do a good job, that's no fun, right? So the other thing, the last thing is they hoped for continued communications with the staff. And just to please keep, keep them in the loop. And I think that's the best you can do. And they understand this is not easy for anybody. We, you know, teachers recognize parents have problems with this. I had a conversation, a long conversation today with a parent. So it's not easy for anybody. And I think just keeping the lines of communication open is very important. So I just needed to express that because I told the teacher that I would. So thank you for listening.
Can I just add, one of the other things that Mike and I have done is we've created surveys with a team of teachers and staff and administrators going out to all of our parents and community, school community, and also to our teachers. And I think to date, we have over 500 parents who've responded. And it's really all about the remote and hybrid model and what's working, what's not working. Suggestions, challenges, obstacles. So there's a free space for people to fill in. And there's also kind of a rating scale for different modes that we're using. And Beth, her alert today, I talked to her and said, please have teachers take some time to fill this out. It's only going to give us more information that help us to kind of identify what the problems are and hopefully arrive at better solutions. So that is out there too. And that's a way to get two-way communication, a real safe way for people.
Thank you.
One, one more thing, Kim. Mayor Grantowski, I, I'm sure because the same problems were mentioned to me, I had an extensive communication with that teacher today and I, I thanked him and I think we're, we're all on the same page.
Thank you very much. Okay. That's good. Lee?
Yeah, um, I, I don't have any children in the school system, but I have grandchildren in colleges. And as far as I know, colleges so far are totally remote. The kids, even at Connecticut, at Connecticut College, they're not in, in classes. They are not. It's remote. It's not.
I teach in person. Wait, wait, I'm a professor.
In a classroom, in a classroom.
I do, I do teach.
Connecticut College is not. And this may be what we have to do.
We're monitoring that. Yes. Yeah, we, we, we agree with you. One of these days, it's probably going to happen. And one of these days may be sooner than we expect.
It's a worst, worst case scenario, but maybe it is the best also.
Yeah, yeah. You're right.
So any other questions for the Board of Ed? Because I want to make sure that we cover all of our, all areas of our town. If hearing none, Patrice, I think, or excuse me, Mary Grantowski, do you have a Town Council report?
Sure. We had a couple of public hearings last night. One was on a gentleman that lives on a scenic road to have a new curb cut put in. Public hearing on a minor changes to Tith policy. We have a lot of things coming up with economic development. The next COW will be devoted to much of that excess property. We have an organization called Nava Retail that will be reporting findings to the council from their interactions with local businesses. So they did one report from earlier in the year when the COVID shutdown had first happened and we had the results from that. And we've done a follow-up now as we're closer in the fall now. And it'll be good to see the comparison and see what the businesses are saying and what they need. And then our job will be to figure out how, how the town can best help them and help the economy. We have a meeting coming up at the end of the month with First Selectman Cheeseborough from Stonington. We're going to be discussing the North Stonington Road Bridge and seeing if we can come to some kind of agreement on that. And we're also going to be looking at road funding. We have our new, it used to be called MACTEC, if you guys are familiar with that. The pavement management study that was completed. And we have a large task in front of us. And right now, the council is going to be making a decision about how we want to fund this. How, how do we want to fund the road repairs? So we need to make infrastructure improvements. And are we going to fund year by year, putting the projects into the CIP? Or are we going to go for a bond again? I don't think anyone has the will to bond at this point. Our only concern is that in rough years, and those of you on the RTM are probably very familiar with this, the CIP is an easy hit. It's an easy place to cut. And so for many years, the, the road funding was cut because, like I said, it was an easy hit. And so what happened was it was delayed and delayed and delayed. And you end up with really roads that are not in great shape. So the decision was made a few years back to bond. So we're in the same place again. We have to, we have to make a decision. So RTM members, let us know what you are thinking about this. I don't, you know, the last council meeting, it didn't look like people had the will to bond. So it'll probably be CIPs, but we're going to need some discipline in order to get our roads in shape. So infrastructure and economic development. And of course, we're worried about schools and the health of the community. So we're worried about schools and the health of the community. So thank you for all you guys are doing at the Board of Ed. We appreciate it. It's not easy. We do not envy you, the position you are in. So thank you very much.
Any other questions for the town council? All right. Reggie, hi, Mike. Welcome.
Yes. In the city of Groton, they're doing a milling and repair for 349 Clarence Smith Chapel Highway. And also they were working on the roads on Eastern Point Road from Benham Road all the way down towards, going towards Pfizer. And they're going to be working on that, I believe for another week or so. And then they also doing a study for considering a road diet in, on Thane Street from Broad Street, I believe, to School Street. Or not Broad, actually another part of Eastern Point Road in front of Electric Boat. And I think the way Electric Boat, what the state is going to do, but I think they want to consider changing it from two, two lanes to one lane both ways. And have a middle, a middle section where people can, you know, turn left off into the road. And I believe that's it in regards to the city at this present moment.
Hey Reggie, just because I'm a resident of the city, you know, the part of Pfizer where they're working on the road, there's never anyone that's helping track traffic. When it was really bad, when you were doing the taurine, there was, but there is no one directing traffic. And there is a little bit, this morning, there was actually a couple of blind spots where it was kind of hard to, you know, who was going jockey. I just wanted to give you that information.
Okay. Cause I, I know mostly in the evening time, there had been some Groton City.
Yeah. From this was like eight 30 to about, I returned home about quarter of 10.
Okay. I'll, I'll make mention of that. Thank you.
Any other question for the city council?
Yes, I have one if you don't mind.
Please Kathy.
The stud, the road diet, as you call that, I love that. Is Eastern Point Road to what road?
Eastern Point, I want to say in front of Pfizer. So not Pfizer, in front of.
Eastern Point Road in front of EB, you said. And then it goes up to where?
To just pass where Benham Road meets. So all the way to where Benham Road.
I think it said Chester, which I'd never heard of before, but I think that's the street they said. Does that sound right Reggie?
Yes. So it's cause with, it, it has Chapman, Triton, and then I think Chester.
Um, can I ask a question? What is a road diet? And can I sign up?
What, what, I believe what they're trying to do is see of, of making access in both directions easy without having congestion on the roads. And then I, I believe also too, they're considering having like a bike path as well as, as part of.
Cause there's that one that's got two, that's got two lanes. So you're talking about compelling it to one lane with one lane available at times where you, when you can get it, if you need to turn.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
May I add something really quickly? We received, the town received a letter from Mayor Hedrick and one from EB. They are both opposed to the road diet at this point because of the construction of EB. It would hamper the, the work there. Is this from what Mayor Hedrick and EB said?
Did they specify how that would, how, how it would be a problem?
Yes, because you're going to, you're going to lose a turning lane. You're, you would, you would cut it down to one lane and then the trucks coming in and out. They've asked that they just delay it until the construction is done over there because it could create, it could create safety hazards. Similar to what Chairman Watson was saying with reduced and all the construction.
Sounds reasonable.
Any other questions? All right. RTM.
Hi. Sorry, I had to move my battery died. So I think, you know, we haven't been very busy. We mostly have been working on things that come our way. And last meeting, we were able to finally revote on our liaison, student liaison positions, which are now part of it with some tinkering of the language from the town lawyer. So that is good. Moving forward, we will hopefully have several students who are interested in the workings of municipal government, government.
Wonderful.
Yeah. We also have, I think I mentioned this last time, we have a kind of a special committee that's been working on researching civilian oversight of the police. And they are really amazing. I'm going to let Bruce, if Bruce is here.
He's not. He had to leave.
Oh, he had to leave. Anyway, Bruce is on that committee and I've been listening to as many as I can. But they are really dedicated. They've been meeting almost weekly. They've been having productive conversations with Chief Fasaro and meeting kind of informally with some of the sergeants and policemen. And I'm just so impressed. They bring really a diversity and a breadth of knowledge and experience to the meetings. And, you know, one is a former policewoman and just a really good committee. So I'm, I think that they're going to come out with a report. And the report, you know, to my mind is not to be a consensus report, although obviously where there's areas of consensus, that's great. But what I really want to highlight is, what I want them to highlight, I don't really weigh in, is you know, models of what has worked, maybe what are drawbacks and what are, you know, kind of benefits of different approaches to doing that. So, so that's going to be wrapping up probably in the next two months, I think, by November. And then we just had one issue that went to finance, which it had to do with, I believe, some education, athletic fields paving at the tennis courts. I can let Representative Chase talk about that because she may know more about it. She is on finance committee and Representative Chase, do you want to? And that, and let me just say, that's going to come to our, to the full RTM on, on next Wednesday. If you want to add anything, Representative Chase.
They voted on the $12,500. I think it was the end of September. And the consensus was that was that the Board of Education would pay for that $12,500. That is not coming out of town funds.
So that, that is the committee report that will come to us next Wednesday and then we'll have a, a full debate. And so next, the 14th, I believe is our meeting. And so that would be that, that issue will come to us. I think that's about it. I just want to kind of also, you know, echo Mayor Grantowski. I'm just very impressed. And in all of the complicated nature of different issues that you're kind of juggling at the same time in a global pandemic. It's pretty impressive. So, you know, I, I hope, I wish you all smooth sailing and reopening the schools. Representative Whitney or Chase, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you covered it all.
That's, that's about it.
So can I ask a question about the tennis court thing? So I, I mean, I, I get it. I think that Dr. Grineer, we did put some money into what was over. And that the part that we're talking about was the paving around the tennis court.
Between courts. That's right.
In between the courts. And that, um, the tennis courts are not just a rotten public school thing, that it's a, it's a community thing. So I guess I was, I'm kind of curious about that.
And I can't really answer to that because I wasn't at the meeting. So I apologize. I think you should listen to the debate that's at the meeting next Wednesday. And that will be, you know, obviously on Zoom. And unless Representative Chase wants to elaborate on some of it.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not like zinging and I'm not being, I'm not trying to be, Kathy, I'm not at all trying to be adversarial. I just was curious about, you know, something so public and gets used so publicly in our, in, in our school system, why that wouldn't happen. But, and once again, that was just a curiosity.
Well, I, I, what was said was that it was done. There, you're asking for payment after the work has been done. And we don't want to set a precedent to have that happen in the future, number one. And let me see what else they have here. I think that's basically about it. Plus, we, we, as everyone knows, we, and Mayor Grantowski said, or said CIPs are the first thing to cut. And we have pushed things off and pushed things off for so many years. And sooner or later, all of that is going to come and hit us all at once. And we need to save every dime we can where we can, because things need to start. The infrastructure of the town needs to get worked on. And as the mayor also said, we need, have road work done. So, I mean, I know 12,500 isn't that much money, but you add it up, if this continues or if it happens again or whatever, it, it's just going to snowball and, you know, eat away at the CIPs again.
Thank you. Once again, I just, I was curious. Kathy, add.
Yeah. Yeah. No problem.
I, I just want to go on record, I played pickleball there this weekend. The courts are great.
Lee, but you got to be unmuted. I'm mute.
I'm sorry. Wonderful article in the day, I think yesterday about our field hockey women. You know, I'm not sure they have ever had their own field hockey court and we field. And we now have one. And it was a beautiful article and our women won.
Yes.
Yes.
So just to make sure, we don't have a separate field for field hockey?
Oh, it is not.
It, it is lined for as well as for field hockey. I just don't want people to think.
They're playing on turf.
Multi-purpose field. Yes.
We're at this point where we ask for new business. Is there things that people would like something to be investigated or not?
Kim, I have a quick question.
Reggie.
Is the school doing anything to try to recruit substitute teachers to kind of assist or help out in regards to this unprecedented time we're in?
Yeah.
I'm not available till April 1st of 2021.
All right. We're going to sign you up. We are, we are working. But as you can imagine, every school system in the state is doing the same thing. So it's, it's, it's not easy, but we're, we're working at it. Yes.
Anything? Alrighty. Listen, guys, I really appreciate, you know, I don't, I know many of us spend our whole day sort of doing Zoom, Zoom stuff. So the fact that you guys are all willing to come back on, I really appreciate that and look forward to seeing people next month. And let's hope that we can kind of curb a tide around this COVID so that we can get our kids safely in, all in. But we know that that's not going to happen in a month. But I would love for that to happen so that our kids and our teachers can do what they do best in that relationship. But I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. It's been seconded by Rosemary. I think all those would be in favor, opposed. Dane. All right. Listen, guys, thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing everyone next, next month. Bye.
Thanks. Well.